Okay, let's see, there are a couple copies here if anybody wants a copy. This is not the Zal budget, but it'll help you understand things. I'll turn it over to Tom.
All right, so start on page nineteen in the budget book. So what we do is we go through the general government type items, plus everything that's not public works related, or capital, or Board of Ed. So we start with, page nineteen is the Board of Selectmen budget. There is no change from last year's budget, and it's pretty much within the same margin of the expenditures as they had in the past, so that's no change to that budget. Page twenty-one is the First Selectwoman's budget. There's a slight increase for payroll, and there is a little bit of decrease in the town report, which I think the way Susan was going to try to handle that was to run it, put it up online, and then also if we had to run some copies in-house, we would try to do it in-house instead of going out for the printing on those. That's just the semi-annual reports that we put out for informational. It's not the budget, or it's not the budget or the audit. So that is a zero increase into that budget on twenty-one. Twenty-three is the Ethics-
Can we ask questions?
Yes.
Tom, and just going over this under Program Services, I see that in 2015, sixteen, it was twenty-two seventy-five, then it went down to fourteen thirty-nine, and in this year it's three thousand. Of course, we're asking for the same amount next year. Do these, did that account usually fluctuate like that, or is it usually about-
Because it's whatever program that, you know, the programs the First Selectwoman is running.
Okay.
Or whatever, there are, you know, there's various programs that may or may not occur. Usually those, there's expenses in here, such as when you have the dinners for the, some of the cert teams, or some of the other volunteer organizations that are run. That's what those are, as well as other programs that are run throughout the First Selectwoman runs.
Thank you.
The page twenty-three, where's the Ethics Commission? Those, you know, that budget, we kind of view alone as it's just one of those ones that's, it's used as needed. Really generally, the only expense they've had in the past few years is that of a P.O. box, but they are there if a board clerk is required, and as well as if there's any other expenses that are required in that. So that's, that is applicable, we had, that budget used to be quite a bit higher, and we brought it to this, you know, nominal amount to try to, to try to, you know, give them what they need if they did need something. The probate court is on page twenty-five. This is an amount that is given to us by Marlborough, and it's the amount that we've been determined that we have to pay. So that's, that's where that number comes from. Page twenty-seven, God bless you. Page twenty-seven is the elections. It sees a slight decrease as we think that we're going to be able to run the various elections, and the referendum, and the primaries, within that dollar amount. Again, it's, it's one of those ones that's just based on how many referendum, or how many primaries, or how many items there are. So we, the, we draw it down a little bit this year globally, but hopefully that number will get us through the various elections this year. Page twenty-nine is the Finance Department. We have, that's, the Finance Department's made up of, for payroll, it's made up of myself, and the payroll coordinator, the A.P. clerk, and accountant. Power time payroll is our fringe benefits analyst. Rental, rental use of buildings is for the custodians. And the service contracts is another big line item, that's our enterprise, as well as any of the payroll systems that we utilize. So that budget is up a point six-two percent, and that is, obviously, the Finance Department helps orchestrate between the town and the board, as well as Central Services, and then in the Pension Departments as well. Page thirty-one is the Collector of Revenue. This is our Collector of Revenue and the office, the service contracts, and this is pretty much the actual system that's run. It's a quality database system. That's what the, that's what the service contract is, as well as we host a website. They host our website for the link to our credit card payments, as well as they do a nice migration between the two. So that, that is a slight increase in payroll, and a slight, and then the service contract, we're hoping will remain constant. Page thirty-three, the Assessor Budget. This fiscal year, we were gladly hired, as our position became open, we had a very good assessor who left to go to another town, and we held the interview processes, and we were able to bring Rich Lasky to our town, and he was hired this year with extensive experience. And the, the increase there is just the change in level, of experience level, and that's where the increase, that's what the increase in payroll is, and that is the, pretty much the increase in that line item budget. So that's pretty much a salary, and there's a half-time, there's a half-time staff to this budget, and a half-time to the library budget, as a shared clerk. Page thirty-five is your Board of Assessment Appeals. There's no change in that budget. Those are for the stipends for the Board of Assessment Appeals, as well as a potential board clerk is needed. Page thirty-seven, I mean, this, this is one of those budgets, it's hard to call every year. This is a town council budget. We have labor attorneys that we incur, that's Keenan and Escalera. We have Benefits Attorney with Shipman and Goodwin, Pension Attorney with Shipman and Goodwin, and we have General Town Council with Murtha Kalina, and Land Use with Murtha Kalina, and Tax Matters is a combination of Murtha Kalina, as well as Pullman and Comley. So, you know, it's been, obviously, that's budget's been over the past few years. We've gone, and, you know, discussed those overages in an effort, I believe, just to, you know, keep the increases down. We elected not to increase this. It's, that's a tough one, to know if it's, you know, going to hit that number. We'll continue to strive to get back to that, which we once were, but with all the litigation and all the matters that go on, it's very hard to get to that number. But that's a zero percent increase in the, in the actual budget. But it obviously-
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So the second, 2017, eighteen, we're almost through with that year, correct?
We're-
Where you have, you have 2017 revised budget.
Yeah.
And-
The left two columns are actual, the other two are budget.
All right. So my question is, how close are we to coming in with the budget for this, this current?
There is a handout in that packet here.
Okay.
You're able to, you know, go and look at that, as you choose to review that. You know, it's not very close.
Okay. Well, it just seems to me like, you know, we've, we're a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and is, is it realistic to say we're going to come back in at ninety-seven?
Well, again, it's hard. I mean, you can always go off.
That's a pretty big difference.
Well, there was a few things, I mean, we, I don't have all those in top of me, but I mean, there was many things that occurred last year that were, there was many land use activities-
Was it Elmcrest? Elmcrest cost a lot of money.
And then, and the, the work on the abatement program, project, and then there were also a few planning and zoning matters that had some, there were some cases where we sued each other, so we had, we had to pay for a lawyer, and then we also had to pay for planning and zoning, zoning's lawyer, the Blending Zoning Commission, I believe it is. And so there was, so you were paying multiple attorneys for the same lawsuit. So there was a few of those matters that hopefully won't come back. Again, you know, it'd be great if you could put more money into that line item, but again, we're trying, trying to keep the budget where, where it is. That's where that is.
Do you know off the top of your head, I mean, we're, we're only three months away from the end of our fiscal year, correct? Or-
Um, let's see, this probably will be March, you have March, April, May, you probably, February's probably not in yet, so probably about four-
I was just wondering, like-
It's forty-eight point seven right now, so. Year-to-date expenditures says forty-eight point seven.
Oh, so, okay, so we got a shot at hitting that ninety-seven thousand for this-
If it trends similarly.
Susan smiling.
You never know.
Wow.
We hope so, we're trying. It's certainly not like last year.
Okay.
Last year, we had some, not just the assessment matter and the Elmcrest development cost, but there was some other issues where people wanted to do something, that our attorney said, "We really need to investigate that some more," and so before it was approved, things had to happen.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was a lot of contract negotiation going on as well, in the labor arena while we were up at forty-one. Definitely in seventeen.
Yeah. We have three contracts that come up typically together. Police are on a different rotation, they're on a four-year contract, and all the others are on a three-year. So when we do them all together, there is some, some help to that, because we're talking basically the same issues on a lot of these, but it costs money, because there's three different situations.
Page thirty-nine is the Town Clerk. The Town Clerk's budget shows us the increase in payroll, and then there was a little bit of a dip for vital statistics, and a little dip in overtime that was not used, so that's showing a point nine-nine increase. The, this department did a nice job getting and accepting credit cards as a form of payment, and they added a second terminal for improved convenience for the people, continued to expand the land records, and, and so some significant items that occurred. Page forty-one is the Central Service Budget. This is a budget that Finance Department controls. It pretty much has the flow, the copiers in it for the whole town. It has any type of drug testing for the various parties and other performance. It has equipment, some equipment repairs and data processing controls. It controls the postage for the, all the general government, advertising, printing for the town and the board, of Ed, on any type of bidding, or types of those type of documents. Travel and mileage for the town, office supplies for all town departments, and copier and managed printing supplies. So there was, we did a zero percent increase in that budget for this year. Page forty-three is the Technology Budget. The Technology Department is made up of one full-time director and an assistant director, and they also have some part-time people that help. Mostly, the kids that are part of the Town Tech Program, or participants that have been as a program and have come back to help on some, on some of our work, either for the general government, and then some also for another fund, it's the Town Tech Fund. This controls most of the licensing for all the departments, except for the, the other funds, but for all the general government, it controls the majority of the licensing. And I guess, except for police and fire, but from the main, the main central system licensing is maintained by this department. Network maintenance is a third-party vendor. And fiscal, as David talked to us, I think it's a couple meetings back, in fiscal seventeen, we had a change in our third-party consultant. For a long period, we didn't have one, and we went out through the bid process and obtained a new one, and so that's why the seventeen was such a dip in the, in that, in computer maintenance. We just did not have that, that support. And we do continue to need that, and as these cyber-type attacks continue to occur throughout the state and the country, and, you know, the, the need there becomes more paramount every day for different backups and licensing and software work. So we're trying to do, pull the line as close as we can there, there's about a one-point-six percent increase to that budget.
So Tom, this recent event that we had to deal with, and obviously, that hasn't hit the budget you have in front of us now. I mean, is that going to be a considerable cost of what we had to go through the last couple weeks? Do you have a sense of it right now? I'm sure it's still in process, but-
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're trying to do, there's multiple things that we're trying to determine. Obviously, it's a considerable expense that was incurred, and that was incurred, and there are a few other components that might need to occur to remedy a few matters. We have done our best to try to put in an insurance claim on one of our policies. We have started that process, it's, we have to go through that with our insurance company. So we'll continue to work through that, hopefully that would mitigate some of those costs. If, for whatever reason that is denied, yeah, then I will come back with more, you know, that would be a substantial general fund effect if it's not covered. But we believe, at the current time, we believe that a lot of the things should be. The, likely, the equipment will not be, unless it was immediately destroyed by the item, but future equipment purchases probably won't be, but the, hopefully, the overtime, and the third-party consultant time, and potentially the review by the forensic review, hopefully those are all things that we can try to recover. You know, if not, we'll definitely report that back.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
On the regular payroll, is that for two people?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, why did it go up ten thousand dollars between sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen? Did you hire somebody else?
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the position, the, the employee that was working as a, as the assistant was kind of moved to a little bit better of a-
Reclassification.
-position, reclassified, as the, there was more, more experience given, as well as the certifications of education and whatnot. So that was, that was done last year. So that was where you see that in seventeen.
Okay. And it looks like you cut down on part-time help.
Well, no, I mean, the budget stays the same, and we try to absorb it within that. I mean, you know, Dave always asks for more there, but again, trying to keep the budget in line, that did not get approved at this point. Page forty-five is the Fire Department. So Chief may, Chief may be coming to the next meeting, but I guess we could go over this quickly, and then if he has any questions for the Chief, he'll probably be at the next meeting. But the, this year is the, so we've, we've included the fifteen-hundred-dollar per member stipend that we've been doing for the past two years now, the year before, I believe, was a thousand, no, one thousand two fifty. So for eighteen and nineteen, we've stayed at the fifteen-hundred-dollar level. So that's what number one-one-zero-three is. Training, they have done a lot of training, so he said that he was able to cut the training line item somewhat there, as they've done quite a bit, as well as there's some, so he's been able to cut that. Equipment repairs and rental, his fleet continues, and his equipment continues to age, so he's put a little bit more money into that line item, as, as he has concerns over, over the continued, you know, aging, aging of his equipment, as we continue to replace it, but it seems like it's a never-ending battle of continuing that effort. But he's, this budget is right within the one-point-six-five percent mark. That's all we have on that. Page forty-seven is the Fire Marshal Budget. That one, we, the request, we just pretty much put the basic increase for the wage rates in this budget, and more or less, that was, that's what that budget is. Page forty-nine is our Emergency Dispatch Contract, as well as our Fire Alarm Monitoring Contract, that kind of goes along with Dispatch. But that is a set aside amount in the contract, and then plus what we have in there, about, I think it's about fifteen thousand or so for the monitoring. But that's what makes up that budget, and that's pretty much the contract with Milltown Dispatch. Page fifty-one is the Police Department Budget. There is a point-six-four percent increase there. More or less, everything is in line, it's just the full allotment of current officers that her, that have been, that have been hired or budgeted for, and there was a slight drop in potential private duty over time, as there's a thought that there's, may not be as much in private duty.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
In the police account, has there ever been any thought given to, and I know that, you know, a police cruiser that has to go out and go fast, has to be a regular car, but if a car that was just doing parole, patrols in the town, you know, and some of these other departments, whether it be building, you know, the Building Department, the Land Use Department, hybrid cars that could use less fuel, has that ever been discussed?
I don't know if that's really, I wouldn't know that answer, but I do know for the Police Department, they all are cars that are, you know, rated for police activity. We buy interceptor vehicles usually from Ford, whether they're, you know, or, we have used Dodge in the past, as well as the Charger, police vehicle. So we buy specific police vehicles, as they're allowed to take those vehicles, some of the people, based on the contract, are allowed to take them with them. So I don't think they'd ever have a car that would just be, you wouldn't have enough cars that would be equipped like that, I don't believe that would fit our department. And the other, other fleet, I mean, right now, we're utilizing older Crown Vics or Impalas that are older. So I mean, again, if the, if they want to set aside money within the capital budget to acquire new fleet vehicles, that's always an option.
Thank you.
I have a question, Tom. Is it, it seems like the price of fuel, gas and diesel, went up significantly about a year ago. Is that because we're just driving around more, or is that because the actual cost of the fuel per gallon?
So, gas and diesel went down tremendously, I believe, since, like, it was like, it was like a sixty-thousand-dollar or so budget, I want to say, and we were floating at like a three or four dollar per gallon. Then it went down pretty good in the ones, and that's where we were getting pretty good with the, that's why we see it in the twenty-thousand range-
Okay.
-where we improved upon it. Right now, we don't know, we don't have, we're floating still-
It's starting to go up some.
And it's going up. I mean, we, we're watching that all daily as we, as we try to move forward, but that's one of the ones that we just, we don't know, and like you said, if it goes up to that two or three mark, it just, you know, we, we were, I think, we were like a one-seven-five last year, we did great, which we locked in after we did the budget, but-
Does the, I'm kind of new at this, does the town have to pay the state taxes on the fuel, that, you know, the general public pay, or you get a break?
No, there's some things that are, there's certain, like, L-U-S-T taxes, and then other, there's a few other little, some taxes, but we do definitely do better than out in the street, yeah, sure.
Okay.
But it does go up and down. Like, we were, I think we're, we were maybe like one-eight last year on oil and diesel, and like, right now, it's, the quotes, they're quote out there, about two-ten. So it's kind of close, but, you know, it was, it's like a twenty-five percent increase just there. So you're just, you're just worried, I mean, right now, we have not locked, we continue to watch it, if we, you know, don't, and we just happen to go, it happens to jump up to three again, and you get stuck out there.
When do you have to lock in, is, or is it, are you-
We just try to watch the, you know, watch it and see what we-
We have a little more time. Yeah, we've been watching the numbers, and the way they charge us is a little different, certainly, than what, you know, you get at the gas pumps. So there's a differential, or there's another way of buying the gas and the diesel, so you may want to wait a little bit, see if that base number comes down a little bit before we lock in a price. Right now, we're sort of on a float.
Well, yeah, we're, for fiscal year eighteen, we're locked in.
Okay.
But for nineteen, we haven't locked yet, no.
We're still kind of looking at-
Well, if it's any consolation, on the radio today, I heard that fuel between now and the summer, they were talking about a twenty-five cents a gallon increase, this-
No, that's not helpful.
This is like for the general public. You know, it was on one of the TIC this morning, they were talking about it.
Yeah.
And they were projecting, but-
Yeah, if they go up on that one tax, there's that one tax that they're projecting to go up, that would have an effect. That, there's that one tax that we do, we have to pay that.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they were referring to, like, the country as a whole, it going up, or if they were talking about Connecticut, per se, because, yeah, we have that grocery receipts tax, and-
Correct.
I don't think the legislature has acted on that yet, have they? I don't-
I don't think so.
They may increase it.
So that's why we, that's why in this year's budget, it went down somewhat, but not as down as low as we had been in the past, just because they don't have that nice lock, low price. And I'm not hearing from the oil guys that it's going down that low or not.
Right. I think it's on its way up a bit.
I think you're right.
So right now, we're, for the fiscal nineteen, we're in the float, so the float is a differential price. It goes up and down as the market goes. Fifty-three is the Emergency Management Budget. This is generally funded a half or so via a grant through FEMA, EPMG. There is a Emergency Management Director that's paid out of this amount, and they're the cell phone for the Emergency Manager Director, and the First Selectwoman are paid out of this account. And that's, we, whatever we use, we get reimbursed, hopefully, generally, half, as long as it's allowable cost to the grant. There can be things in this budget that are charged and aren't necessarily allowable to the grant, but this is the budget. There's been no increase. It's pretty consistent. I think that we bud, I think we get a, I think we project from the grant, what is it, almost around ten thousand, something like that. So they were, globally, we're going to spay, so this is the thirteen, is what we have in here.
It's a fifty percent reimbursement?
Yeah, so we get about-
So we don't get all of the money, it's about a fifty percent-
Forty-four.
-from Homeland Security.
Is this reflecting what you're going to get back, or we're going to get something back on this thirteen thousand number?
So, so in, in the, in the, there is a little bit in the, in the revenue, expecting what you think you might get back, which is more geared toward what you expend than actually what, what's budgeted, because I don't want to overstate my revenue, because it looks like we're usually spending around that six to seven thousand, depending on what occurs, but I mean, if you do run the shelter, if you do have problems, you could use these items. Thankfully-
But you're not seeing revenues here, of course, they're in the front of the book.
Okay.
So some of these budgets, when you really look at them, you have to look at the revenue side, as well as the expenditure side. Private duty is an example, you know, it's charged in the police budget, but it's matched with revenue slightly higher in the revenue side. And then the grant for this would be, Tom, that would be in the revenue side, right? The grant, the EPMG?
Yes. Yeah, yep.
Okay.
You have to kind of flip back and forth when you're studying it.
Page fifty-five is the, is the Building Department. This again is pretty much a salary increases in this. For the Fire Marshal and the Building Department, there are a few potential people, consultants and/or employee that may, more or less consultants, I believe, but could be potentially an employee that would be hired when this big project goes off, when those building receipts come in, some of that money that will, you know, will determine discussions with Building, Fire Marshal, we're going to put that money into, so another fund that we have is called the Land Use Planning and Zoning Fund, put those revenues there, and the expenses will go into those to try to, so we'll take some of that building revenue right away, put it in that fund, spend those items out of that money directly for the, the big building project as it goes on, so it doesn't have a huge effect on your- So it doesn't have a huge effect on your general fund. So we'll take out, as I'd say, that's for, talking purposes, it's fifty thousand dollars of additional building permit, consult a fifty thousand dollars for fire marshal. Those would go in to that other fund as the fees come in. And then they would spend the money out of that fund. And then if there's any money remaining on that, then it would come back to the, you could either remain in that fund for that purpose or come back to the general fund at a later date. But that's so you don't have a massive, high increase in your expenses as well as an increase in your, like a one-time increase in your revenue to a one-time increase in your expense. So we'll try to do that for you when that all, when that all occurs. So now we're going to jump to page seventy-three from fifty-seven to seventy-one. We'll talk about that next time. And here we are in the planning department. The planning department, pretty much is just an increase, it's just increase in payroll and, and a couple addition, I think it was an increase in, it's just an increase in payroll pretty much in time for the part-time land use and E D C coordinator. Page seventy-three is the zoning enforcement department. Big one, zoning enforcement officer. Again, put the increase for payroll in there. And based, just on the rounding, it came up to two-point-four. It was just, it should be, no, it's a two percent, it was around two-point-four. Page seventy-seven is our planning and zoning commission. That was the entity called the River cog. The, they are, are cog that we belong to. Their fees increased to eleven-four-fifty-three this year. So that is showing the five-point-oh-two percent increase. So that is the contribution to the River cog. Page seventy-nine is our zoning and board of appeals. There's no change to this budget. Page eighty-one, inland and wetland. There is no change to that budget. Oh forty-five, the conservation committee. There is no change to that budget. The oh-four-six, the economic development commission. That has marking program expenses as well as board clerk fees. Sometimes the board clerk fees are higher than the five hundred, but they're going to try to absorb that in the global department. So there is no change in that budget. Cabinet commission expense, there's pretty much just a board clerk fee there if needed. Recently, their chairman has been taking the minutes. Page eighty-nine is the amount budgeted for Chatham Health District. There, this was the preliminary amount that was budgeted. There's a possibility of a slightly revised amount in the future there. I think Susan will have an update that for the future.
Some of what you're seeing with the council governments in the Chatham Health District, the reasons their monies are requested to go up is because the money that they get from the state has gone down.
Correct.
So these regional efforts get subsidies from the state and the state has cut everybody. And so if you're in this regional entity, not only do you lose almost eight-hundred thousand dollars, you lost in education cost sharing, now we're losing some money because we have to pay more to belong to the council governments because they took their money away. And same with the health district. The health department gives a subsidy to the health district and that went down. So then they ask us to pay more.
Is, just, since we've gone to this health district in the last ten or fifteen years, is it, has it provided us a savings in the budget?
I think the way it's provided a savings is we used to have one full-time health sanitarian and then we also had the visiting nurse association. Now, the visiting nurse association alone was between a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar subsidy from the town of Portland. So the health district is at a hundred-seven. If you hired one sanitarian, a qualified sanitarian, with his or her health benefits and other benefits, you'd be probably over that number if they were here for a long time. The man who was here is now the district executive. You know, he's the health director of the Chatham. So he has a lot of experience. His salary is higher than this.
Don Mitchell, right?
Yeah. So to answer you, that has probably saved the town money, I would guess.
Okay.
Pro Bay Court, we're paying more. Not a lot, but we're paying more. Council of Governments, we're paying way more, way more. That used to be a small amount.
Are you getting some benefit from that, council of governments or?
Tom and I talk about this a lot. I guess it all depends, you know, it depends. Are we saving money? No. And it's not very old. It's a relatively new district in the last ten years, the last five years, I guess. But, you know, it's a work in progress.
There are a few grant programs and things that they run and share and things about mapping, you know, the G I S component things were some interesting things that they ran.
Again, I think that the state frankly hasn't decided whether they want to really invest in these councils of government to help local districts. Theoretically, they should, could, if you were in an ideal situation, do a lot more of the land use. But they're just not staffed that way. They don't have the money to be staffed that way for seventeen towns. It's, you know, the more I think you see this, you'll see how the state has, of course, its hands in everything we do, especially in these regional districts. And there's been attempts to try to make things better, but they've got a ways to go. Like we all. Thank you, Tom.
On page ninety-one, and this is part of where that used to be. There used to be a fund there for a secretary that worked in this environmental health. It's kind of part of that Chatham Health now. So that's usually always a zero budget on ninety-one. Ninety-three is social services. This, pretty much we left flat except for, there was a number that we put in last year, program services, as there was a potential thought of a need that existed related to C R T and some food and the way they did some meals. And it turned out that that need did not necessarily exist or it was remedied in another manner. So that, that we just took that number out of the budget. Page ninety-five is your, is your Waverly Center, your senior center. This is made up of one full-time payroll individual and the director in the regular payroll, the halftime person and a ten-hour week clerical assistant and part-time payroll. Some of the service contracts are more or less for the H VAC and the equipment and some of the other, the fire extinguisher type items there. And instructor fees are those fees that are paid to various instructors and for the programs that are run. Commons meetings or dues are for the meetings and dues that the people attend and as well as sometimes the dues with the accreditation program that they're part of. Electricity is the, obviously electricity runs the building. And we also have the, the food bank is in there, the food, the food bank. And so I think they have a lot of equipment in there as well that runs. They could possibly draw on some of that electricity. And the program services are the various programs that they, they spend money on to run the various programs for the, for the, for the seniors and the, the participants of the Waverly Center.
Some of our directors are here tonight, so when we're, when Tom finishes this section, we'll ask if they have anything they want to add. Because not everything they've asked for is in these, in this budget. So they may want to explain some aspects of their programming to you. We'll wait for Tom to finish.
I just have a question. Obviously, that electricity is all over the place. Is that because of the usage of the building can bounce around? Because I, I mean, I'm looking at this year and we're already at eighty-three thirty-nine. So that's looked like we're trending to not hit our budget for this year. So I'm just curious, I'm just trying to understand the fluctuation in electricity use.
Well, there were, the one year I know we had done some of the mechanical upgrades and there might have been a little bit of downtime in there as well as rates have risen somewhat on certain items. So we do see that. Yeah, it does seem to be a little higher. I know we did a lot of renovations to that building. Generally, that causes energy to go down, electricity to go down. In this instance, it's not, it may not be, as well as I know there are a lot of, there's been freezers, multiple freezers and refrigerators being run. I know there is a pretty nice kitchen that's in this building. There was a couple updated refrigerators, again, what you would think would save money. But, yeah, I did notice that trend as well.
Tom, I, just, this makes me think, I mean, with all the town buildings, does the town sort of shop around for a, the most reasonable electrics?
Yeah, town's part of the C C M program.
And, two parts of the question and then you can answer. And then the other part is, have you done some of these lighting upgrades where the power company essentially pays for an upgrade when you go to LEDs? I, I've done a lot of this with commercial. I don't know how it works with municipalities, but I mean, the savings are huge and, you know, and they basically pay for the work and then you get like a zero interest loan and you pay it back on your monthly bill, but essentially you're paying it back with the savings that you're getting from using less electricity. So just wondering if, as a town, if we've looked into those programs.
So, I think last year with Lantern Energy, we ran a multiple staged review project is similar to what you're explaining. We did a lot of the lighting within the town hall. We did multiple facilities. There's a payback that's like a loan. It's, it comes back as a, it comes back as a loan, but it comes back as a payment through back to the utilities on the utility bill. So it's just part of, so your, in theory, your bill goes down and you pay them for the improvement.
Yeah.
In theory. We did run an energy efficiency improvement and that's where we improved a lot of their, the electrical systems and the H VAC systems. There, I, again, I know there, there are some, you know, I'm not an H VAC expert, so I wouldn't really know to explain why electricity is up. But I do know that we have, we do utilize the C C M program for energy management and we did get into a locked-in rate there that was favorable to us. But, but distribution continues to go up, although the, the rate, the rate can go, you know, stays somewhat stable. The distribution goes up. So you've seen that. And that was, I mean, I think we met with, and probably that is probably the big reason to it. We met with the electrical company last year and they had said that there was going to be what? Close to maybe like a ten to twenty percent increase on distribution. I remember we met with our rep there and there was a big piece of the distribution. So it very well could be that component of it.
About four years ago, maybe five years ago, Clean Energy Task Force brought proposals to the board and one was with the schools to do a solar project that was rejected by this board. And then we also, Tom and I had brought some things through programs for a power purchase agreement where you do a major renovation on your municipal buildings with the hope, just as you were saying, where the money that is saved pays for the program and some of that's guaranteed so that you never will pay more than what they're saying you will not pay. But this board rejected that as well. They didn't want to go that route. So it's something, you know, incentives come and go. So we'd have to look at whether there's incentives available. But one area, and we're not talking about it here tonight, but I really believe that there are some areas that we could save some money. But it means, it means major investment too. So while you're not putting the cash out, you are responsible for the improvements and the payment comes through the reduction in your electricity.
Correct.
So there was a hesitancy by this board to proceed with that. So that's why we did not.
Okay, the one, the programs I've seen out in the business world is like your payback is two to three years and then, then you're getting all the savings. You know, initially, you're getting some savings because part of your savings is going to pay off for the work that was done.
That was how some, that's how this, this, I think the program that you're talking about is similar to what we ran. It was that, it was, there was the short paybacks.
Yeah.
You know, but it's maybe three to four years. But it was, you know, there was, the other projects that Susan was talking about were the bigger, the bigger scale projects where we brought, that was, one, one was through C C M and, and again, it was, you know, the guy, a company came in to the study. Here's all, here's all these upgrades you could do and it was, you know, millions of dollars. And the other one was a, but we did do that recently with Lantern on that. The other thing that popped into my head as we were looking at this, in fiscal year seventeen and as well as in eighteen, we had two bad floods. No, I used the wrong word. We had two bad water damage. So there's water damage that occurs in the back of the Buck Foreman building and it kind of ponds in that Buck Foreman building to the senior center and the water runs into those facilities. I believe in both fiscal years, we had to have J P McGuire come in and do, and run heat pumps and dry out equipment for a decent period of time. So that's, could be a decent amount of use of power in a short-term period. As well, those were, I think both years, I think both years we got hit.
I think the, the board event back a couple of years ago, I know was signing a contract and I believe it's been fully implemented to do one of those lighting upgrades. And it would be interesting to go back now and take a look and see how their usage is versus.
We did it the same, we did it the same time, the town did. So the board did one and the town did.
When, we did them at Tri-Town a couple of times and some of the, the percentage, one of the deals was the power company was paying something like forty-seven percent of the cost with their rebates. Now, the program sort of ebbs and flows depending on how much money, I guess, the state's putting in or the power company wants to put in. But it's worth keeping our eye out for it. And I know several, you know, some contractors that do that work and they're, you know, they're sanctioned by the state and the power company, so maybe.
If the board has an interest in that, we'll definitely pursue that.
It might be worth.
Yeah, I think it is. I, we just didn't have the votes to do these projects and they were rejected. I mean, we, we went pretty far. I don't think we were on the board at the time for the, the solar panels. That was a pretty big endeavor and it was rejected. And it was, it was rejected. So we can look into that.
Page ninety-seven is the municipal agent of elderly. This is where we travel with our bus van drivers. Now, this was a budget that had always been reimbursed. It, in theory, should be reimbursed. Right now, we're waiting for a year and a half of reimbursement. But we continue to work with that and provide quality services to, to the individuals in this town.
I have held back the last payment to, I don't know if you're on that page yet, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've held back this quarter's payment, because they owe us a lot of money. This is another example-
The, the state?
Yeah. Of reimbursement that hasn't happened. So, I told Middletown Area Transit, we would not be making our payment until we get reimbursed for expenses from last year, a quarter of the year before, right, Mary? All of last year, and, and-
And the last quarter.
And the last quarter of the year before. Are we being reimbursed now?
No.
No. So-
Yeah, that, those are the expenses on page ninety-three, I know what you're talking about, they're the oh-one, oh-fifty-three, eight-six-oh-one-three, and oh-one, oh-fifty-three, eight-six-oh-one-four.
You know, these small things add up and up and up, and it's, it's harder for smaller municipalities to absorb these kinds of cuts, because we run on a very thin margin.
Yeah, so, so far in those budgets, we had budgeted twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, like, we paid thirteen, eight fifty-eight, and on the eleven thousand, we only paid twenty-two, six, six-nine. We haven't made any future payment on that, because we haven't gotten paid since, all of, all of fiscal eighteen, we've gotten nothing, all of fiscal seventeen, we've gotten nothing, and we didn't get, on the last quarter of sixteen, we owed some money. Frustrating. Page ninety-nine is the library budget. This budget, you know, it's come in very, very strong, it's a point-five percent increase, some increase to just regular payroll based on salary and wage increases and union agreements. Now, this budget did see us like savings for some of the projects that we ran on electricity, so it was, tried to lower that by, the margin, we lowered it there a little bit, almost five thousand. So hopefully, you know, cer-, certain, certain of the projects we've done, you know, they, they, there are savings, and other ones, it's either the equipment is more, or we've had other problems that, you know, cause it, i.e. running huge massive dryers to mitigate massive amounts of water in your basement, as well as things of that nature. Page one oh-one is the fringe benefits. This is where the fringe benefits are for all the people in the, in the town that are not the board, that are not within the other funds. The, this year, we, we've gone out to bid on medical insurance the year before. There was a nine percent increase in last year with that bid. We switched over, they've rate capped at fifteen percent, and that's what we're budgeting the increase now. Claims are tough, you know, there's some sickness and illness, and claim history is tough, the trend in the medical industry is tough, so that's where, so a decent increase is in the medical cost. There are, the pension plan, the defined pension plan has, the fine, the defined benefit pension plan for the town employees, it has been closed, and so new members don't go into that. So, in the, kind of, until the, kind of, as runout occurs, less people contribute, markets, values increase, fluctuate, lives go on longer, so liabilities go up, requiring the contribution to go up. If the contribution goes up, there's less people putting money in, so that goes to the town to be the person that pays the money. So, in the short, kind of, ten-year, which isn't too short, but there's defined benefits when you close them, you know, the contribution kind of goes up for a while, as, as you have to contribute more in to make sure you meet the goal. So, we, we make the actuarially valued contribution for the town pension plan, and the police plan is still open, so we also make that in the fire plan. We make the actual valuation for that. That's a, that's not a defined benefit plan, but it's more of a, it's a, it's a kind of trust. But, that's actuarially valued. And then, with the town plan, there, we contribute six percent on the people that are in the defined contribution plan, so if you're, of your base salary, six percent gets contributed, and that's part of the, the town pension plan number.
Tom, what's the percentage for the employee contribution for their pension?
On the D, on the DC plan, it's six percent. So, you, we put in, you bet, you put six in, we give you six. On the DB plan, I'm going to say, I want to say that's tough, that just comes out of payroll. I want to say it's six percent for the town, and I want to say it's four for police, if the fire doesn't contribute.
Did, did you say the police was a defined benefit plan, or is it the same?
The police is a, is a open defined benefit plan, correct. The, the town benefit plan is, defined benefit plan is closed to new participants. The town employees go to defined contribution. And then, in the collective bargaining, this year, every, every other year, there's an OPEP year where we have to do a valuation for OPEP, so this year, we have to do a valuation Page one oh-three is our risk management. This is where we have our insurance for the general fund, as well as some, we have our insurance policy, which is our normal insurance policy component, for LAP and auto, so LAP is liability auto property, and then we also have a seven thousand dollar payment in here for the airline trail environmental policy that we need to do, and then there's some monies there that are in this budget that are for self-insurance, when we have self-insurance deductibles, as well as other things we have to handle. We anticipate no increase in the LAP premiums this year, so hopefully, that will stay similarly close. Page one oh-five, we're anticipating either late this fiscal year, early next fiscal year, probably late this fiscal year to do a bond issue related to the park project, the Spring Street project, the sidewalk project, and possibly the land under the bridge project. So, that is a result, that results in a bond entrance payment only of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for fiscal nineteen. We're going to issue all at once, as there's been, hopefully, that we'll get some better interest savings on that, as well as some of the projects are moving quicker than we anticipated, and we didn't, and as well as, if you do multiple issuances, there's multiple issuance costs, so each time you issue, you have to pay the bond council, the FAA's, the rating agencies, to do all that. And in each, and pretty much in each of the components, there is obviously a finite amount of money with a lot of work that needs to be accomplished. So, that, that is the majority of your increase in there. We did run a, we did run a capital lease program in fiscal year eighteen. There was a first payment in eighteen, this is the second payment in nineteen, so that's in this number as well. As you can see, next year, the two of the leases will fall off. See, fiscal year fifteen lease is, ends in nineteen, and then the fire truck lease falls off.
What's the, what's the two thousand eighteen GNOB town? What is, what does that stand for?
So, that, that stands for General Obligation Bond, so that's the-
Oh, okay.
-anticipated bond issue for the park and Spring Street and sidewalks.
Twenty eighteen. The nineteen ninety-nine is a different one, right? Is that your question?
That's different.
He asked me twenty eighteen, right?
Yeah, okay, I was-
Sorry.
But, but I was going to ask what the, the old one was for. You have a two thousand twelve-
Two thousand twelve is your refunding of your high school, middle school.
Okay.
And the ninety, the ninety-nine, General Obligation Bond. That's a ninety-nine obligation bond, that's la-, next year, I believe, is his last year.
Well, it's nice to see we have some falling off.
I think that's for the town hall project.
For what?
I believe that would have been the town hall-
Oh, the town hall, okay.
-project. That's the nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay.
This is just kind of an excerpt from the audit. It basically tells you the flow structure of the bond payments as of June seventeen. So, you can see when some of the things, in the amortization schedule in the middle of the page, it kind of shows you that there's a dip there in two thousand twenty, in the bond schedule, it goes down by a decent amount of money, and then it kind of stagnates at that nine seventy-five mark. In case you wanted to see that.
So then, but the principal then jumps up in two-
That's consolidated.
Oh.
So, it's five years together.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Right, is that what-
Yeah, I got, yeah, that, okay. I see that.
It goes, goes first five years, and then thereafter for five years, and then thereafter. The page of-
That's an important page. Thank you for sharing that, Tom.
Page one oh-seven, that's just your inter-fund transfers, and we'll, we can individually hit those as you go. There's a couple that won't be individually hit, and I can just explain them real quick. So, there is the other, other is made up of, it's a, it's, it's a hundred and twenty-five, there is a older, old-school construction, bond part of the old-school construction project, there was a deficit sitting in a fund, where the town has been trying to work this off by putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand every year into the fund, writing down the deficit. We continue to do that with this transaction, to keep moving on paying that down. There's a, in Fund eighty-four, we set up a, we set up ten thousand dollars a transfer to go into a fund for potentially boarded up and blated properties. That allows the building department and the blate officer to board up and blate, and then we try to, there's a couple of ways we can try to obtain, getting the money back. You can either put a lien on the property, but that kind of takes away your tax sale ability, or if they owe taxes, you can just, you know, kind of hold and wait and do a tax sale. Little bit of problem there is if you do that, and they, whatever, there's a way that's, that's not good, but that's the, there's the two options that we have, and we, that's what that, that's what that number is, and then there's a fifty thousand dollar transfer to the Water Department for Fire Hydrant upkeep, that was instituted by the board a few years back. And then, there is a transfer to the renewable energy fund, that's been a five thousand dollars amount, there's a fund that's there. We buy, Rex, Energy Rex, from Sterling Planet, and then sometimes, if there's other projects that need to occur for renewable energy, there's monies there available. Page one oh-nine is the contingency fund, that we always set aside a hundred thousand dollars for contingency, and that allows for the, the board to, there might be a-
Yeah, there's a little page.
Yeah, so we might have to get you that, new page, that, because there'll be a page out of the lab there.
We repeated the page, sorry about that.
Repeated page here.
So, again, the contingency is, it's there to, you, it's there in case there's a need. It's, you know, it gives us some ability to, to work within the various items, and that's kind of where items occur, such as if you have a huge over in legal, or if you have a huge over in, in engineering, or if something happens, there's this money there, or if there's certain things that the board sees fit that needs to occur, take place or occur, we can do that. A lot of times, we will move money through the fourth quarter transfers, through this money, or, or we put it right in here, we try not to spend too much out of this account, delineate more toward, we try to move the money to where it belongs, but, and spend it out where it belongs, but if there's really no place good where it really should go, then it goes right into contingency.
Tom?
Yes.
Is this hundred thousand number relatively new, though? Because-
No.
The other years you have-
So, let me explain that again to you, so-
Okay.
So, I guess, so, what I'm saying is, we don't necessarily, we try not to spend it out of that account. So, we utilize the money, and we transfer it through fourth quarter transfers somewhere else.
Okay.
Or, or, or you don't, or you don't spend it. You know, if it's, doesn't spend, it flows into fund balance. If you do spend it, it goes to where you're transferring it, but we try not to spend. The auditors like to see, you know, they don't, they don't mind that you have that there, they just try to say, try to do your best to spend it where the object is, so where the true object is, if it's a public works matter, if it's legal.
Transfer it.
Right, and then you move the money from there, but if you don't have anything, like I believe, like last year, one of the things was that, there was a hundred and seventy-fifth annual ceremony, there was parades and all that kind of good stuff, so the revenue came in, is miscellaneous revenue, and the expenses came out of contingency. So, that was like a good place where that was, legitimately, that's where it all goes.
Okay.
So, that's why you don't see the expense, that it's moved to where it goes.
Got it. All right, thank you.
So, we go to page one nineteen, one, I'm sorry, one twenty. So, this is the animal control budget. We do get some monies from, for property rental from Middletown. Majority of the money gets transferred in from the general fund. We do have one full-time employee, is our animal control officer. We also have a couple part-time officers that help on the weekends, or when that person's The first part here is the benefits, more or less related to that department, contract, the, the, the expenses here are running the dog pound and the associated fees with that dog, with the dog pound facility. The increase in this budget's one point one, a hundred and sixteen thousand, I'm sorry, is it one point one, one point one-two percent? More or less, that is related to the salary increase, as well as medical insurance, because this person, the funds, when you do the funds, the medical insurance follows with it on the funds, so that's where it gets a little tricky. That's why in the general fund, we put it all into one program, so that all the budgets don't fluctuate so much, just based on medical insurance, but in the other funds, you kind of have to do that, so that's where, where those matters lie and increase occurs. Everything else, more or less, was held the same. The increase in telephone was, because we had to switch the people over to smartphones for the two people, because the technology just was there, as well as they, they get alerts or information from the police department, so, or from dispatch, and that's how they The page one twenty-four is our youth service department. This department, we have, you know, depending on the year, there's a grant for workforce for children, that's what the twelve thousand, five hundred number is. There are youth service bureau grants that come in, and at times, we do receive money from DSS based on our counseling center. There also are, there are programs that are run for the children, and there are fees generated from that, as well as the general fund. There is, page one twenty-five, there is one full-time employee for regular payroll, and then there are various temporary payroll people that help in work the, the project. The, the expenses there for personnel are that, the benef-, are the benefits and expenses associated with personnel. There's some insurance that gets allocated, there are some building electricities that get allocated, and there, and then there is a CRC and ECC consulting project, where there's a gentleman that does a lot of the consulting work for the CRC, and there's another woman who does a lot of work for the ECC consulting. And there's another, uh, woman who does a lot of, of work for the ECC consulting. Um, the, uh, we had a little bit of dip in, uh, sixteen seventeen based on some of the, uh, the, uh, there were some issues that the, uh, some of the workers had, personal matters, that they needed time away, so they weren't able to work as much or, um, and, uh, you see that a little bit in the expense as well as you see in the billing differences. Um, so some of those issues have been remedied. And the people are in better places and hopefully, um, the matters, uh, you know, they'll be able to get back to seeing, uh, the patients and the, uh, the, the students that need assistance and the individuals that need assistance. So that's pretty much the youth service department. Page one thirty-three is the, um, park and rec department. There is a park and rec director. There are, um, there's a clerical person that's shared with the senior center. Uh, we do have a bunch of, uh, temp, um, teen payroll. He leaves that at around eighty-seven thousand. He does his best to stay within that. Obviously, that is tricky, uh, for him to come in with that. But he tries to mitigate that either by doing, cutting somewhere else or doing more fees. But he tries to stay in that eighty, eighty-seven to eighty-nine thousand dollar range, um, in his budget and then tries to work through that throughout. Uh, the rest of their, the rest of the personnel matters are just that, personnel expenses related to those positions. Um, the contract services is a contract for the new soft, uh, software. The conference meeting and dues, that's an error for last year by me on the budget. I didn't put an number in and conference meeting and dues, that's just not right. So we put in eight hundred this year. So that's why that's up. Uh, we did not incorporate, um, electricity, water, sewer, or any of that for the park. As that needs to be determined of where that's going to all go and be. But that could be a large number for wherever that determines it to be.
But at this point, it's really not going to hit that fiscal year, I would think. I mean, anticipated completion would be, we're hoping, July twenty nineteen, so.
So hopefully, right, it wouldn't be a big issue. And then, uh, there was a few, the, the, we consolidated a few of the accounts under youth programs to just make that a little bit better reporting for when he utilizes his reporting module for the new, uh, online program. If he codes in the expenses, he'll have a nice revenue and expense structure. So we tried to cut a few of the expenses out and move them in, uh, for them into one line. And then there was a few, just a few other programs where he just didn't see that he wasn't going to get the, the participation is just not there in sports camps like there used to be. So that's where you see the expense number drop by thirteen thousand because the revenue dropped by fifteen thousand. So it was an expected kind of double-edged sword there. Um, so that's why he has a negative four point oh one overall in that department. So did you, Susan, did you, um, want to have anybody else comment? At this point, I think we got through the majority of.
Yep. I'll end it up to the first row. Ryan, did you have anything you wanted to add about your department tonight? Are any questions for town park?
Yeah, I mean, I'll take any questions. I don't have anything to add. I think there's something else. So if you have a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks. Come by any town.
Mary? Youth Services.
I have nothing to add. If anybody's got questions, feel free.
Janet? And Margot Chapman is here, chairman of our library board as well.
Um, I did give you off, uh, she, in cases that, um, described the different kinds in our budget. And the first time you're looking at that, so.
Thank you.
Kind of went over of the thing. And I just highlighted a few things, um, one of the challenges now in life.
Yes, thanks. On the sheets that I gave you, um, one of the things I mentioned, of course, materials, books and discs and all of those things are now, um, complemented by digital kind of things, ebooks and online services. So we're struggling to keep up with all the traditional services and continue to improve. So, you know, the, this is kind of, um, we hope that this budget can stay at least where it is. It's, it's still difficult because we haven't had really increases to meet new demands while, you know, still, we still want books, of course. So, uh, you know, it's kind of a challenge. And our friends have given us quite a lot. They still do, uh, do most of our programming expenses and all. And they used to do, uh, a lot of the, um, discs for the audiobooks. But they had to stop doing that because, uh, they've spent down a lot of their money and don't get in quite as much as they used to for the book sales, although they do very well, thankfully, thanks to all the people that contribute as, um, memberships have been going well. But anyway, they, um, just can't keep up supplementing everything. Um, the board has, uh, okayed some of our private funds, you know, ex- exceptional funds that we get from donations and state grants. Um, they've allowed us to buy some of the ebooks, but I don't know how long that can go on because, as I mentioned, the state is, uh, has cut back on some of their grants. What a surprise, seems to be a trend, um, you know. And, uh, we are losing about six thousand a year that we used to have that kept coming into that fund. So there's those kind of things. Um, you know, basically I did, you can read it over, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. One thing, um, right after we had the budget in and all that, I found out, uh, that we have another expense that we haven't had for a cataloging source. Um, things, we used to buy this set of books to do cataloging of the materials and it would last for a few years, a good few years. And now it's all online and every year they want you to pay three hundred dollars. So you have to eke that out of this too. So just, it's another little expense there that's coming up. But, um, you know, so basically, you know, just trying to keep up with everything. And, uh, we're doing really well with programming and do a lot of the meeting rooms. So the staffing, of course, is very important. And I, I thank Susan for trying to make sure we keep that at a good level. We're good. I wanted more, but you know, we always want more. But, um, thanks. If you have any questions, call me anytime.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Tom mentioned, you know, I mentioned there's about six thousand less coming in from the state every year. Um, and actually, there's, there's another thing I didn't even think of mentioning. The state has this kinetic card program where you can go into a library anywhere in the state, public library, and borrow something. And, um, you know, you can, uh, bring it back to your library and things get delivered. And, uh, books that are borrowed by someone from another town, your library used to get a reimbursement, a little reimbursement every time that happened by someone from another town walking into your library. This is an interlibrary loan. It's just basically, you know, if I worked in Middletown, went over there and took out a book there, they'd end up getting kind of credit for that. And, uh, that, that stopped. They've really cut back on it. It's still in the statutes that it exists, but, uh, the, it's been reduced. And the other thing is, there's a delivery system. And that system has been reduced in that we rely upon for all kinds of interlibrary loan, for book clubs, for these inter, you know, interactions. Um, it's just the volume of it has gone up tremendously with our very efficient computer systems that allow us to request books all over the place. Um, so there's a lot of issues with that, that if that doesn't continue, um, our library consortium will have to come up with some more dollars. And that won't affect us this year, but it's something we're concerned about for the future that, you know, they're taking out contingency funds to try and supplement what the state isn't doing anymore as well, um, with increased demand as well. So, uh, yeah, but the, um, the redo, the reduction of the state support is, you know, having, it's going to keep having a cumulative effect just like everything else. Because, you know, we had money coming in every year we knew about. We'd run in a, um, a report every year with all of our statistics. And, um, with that, they'd give us a, a little, um, grant of about two thousand dollars. They don't do that anymore. It's still required that we do the report and that's fine. But, you know, we get nothing anymore for it. So there's all these things eating away at us too, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, you're next. Anything on technology that you wanted to add or ask?
Jump in there, Jim. I think Jim was in the room with it.
Watch the cord, please.
Yeah, no, it's there. Put it there.
Yes, uh, I think everybody knows that the, uh, the technology landscape is changing minute by minute, day by day. Uh, as, as was evident, uh, last week that we were affected by the, the ransomwares was the judicial department and a few other towns around the state. So, um, trying to keep up with that, stay ahead of it. Um, it, it's a, it's an ongoing process. And again, you know, for the most part, is, is, is keeping, um, uh, operating systems upgraded uh, to the point where they're, um, less vulnerable. The older operating systems are, are, are more vulnerable to, to, um, such ransomware and a lot of the, uh, cyber threats that are out there. And there's new ones coming every day. I get notices of, uh, you know, what's happening. And, uh, you know, as Susan mentioned, you know, I think what we're going to start doing now, uh, that this, uh, you know, obviously we have this occurrence, is, is, is doing a lot more staff education. I mean, most of the things that, that come in, come in via email, you know, opening, uh, uh, attachments, uh, and so forth that carry Trojans and all kinds of good stuff. So we have to stay ahead of that as well as, uh, uh, you know, in, in, in increasing the, uh, the complexity of the firewalls, uh, and backups, so. Anybody have any questions? Jim?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones with what was in the budget, because I know the budgets were, I'm sorry, this isn't. I know the budgets were prepared, um, before.
Mm-hmm.
That it happened. I know that you had a server that was damaged. I know it was already old anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that something you anticipate is going to get covered by insurance or we're just going to have to pay?
Probably not, you know, I, I, I don't think it is. One of that, one of those servers, that's our, our, our blade server. Uh, and the blade server basically is a, uh, it's a five-server pack that shares backplane, uh, so power supplies, nick cards and so forth. When we purchased that server, oh God, seven, eight years ago, uh, um, that holds actual five physical boxes, okay? And when we purchased it, we purchased it with three, okay? And then we added as, you know, we got money, uh, and so forth. When we first brought that in the door, okay, the, the operating system was in two thousand and three. So I, I have put that into the, the long-range capital, you know, whether that, you know, uh, gets funded or not. Again, uh, it's, remains to be seen. Hopefully, we can, you know, make some inroads there.
And the other item I think is important is, I know, um, upgrading the firewalls.
Mm-hmm.
And is that also in the capital or is that?
Well, we have already purchased a new firewall, uh, on a recommendation from our, uh, cybersecurity firm. Um, and, and again, the, the firewalls that, uh, that we have in place, um, you know, again, we're, we're older, okay? So from a standpoint of vulnerability, um, you know, there's, there's a lot more, uh, newer threats out there, okay? That, you know, when they came out with those, uh, you know, it was sufficient. But now, you know, as far as in relation to newer threats, uh, i- it can, you know, leave a little gap. So the new firewall just came in today? Yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So that is going to be, uh, installed on Friday, uh, and so forth. So which will give us a lot more, um, you know, granulation as far as being able to lock things down, uh, also, uh, from a standpoint of, uh, disseminating a lot of the traffic, um, that comes through.
Thank you. Thank you. Try to avoid those long weekends.
Yeah. You know, Tom brings up a good point too. You know, right now, basically, when I started doing, doing the IT, we went to, uh, we, our backup solutions, okay, were, uh, we had auto loaders, which are, which, which, which were tapes, okay? So, uh, we would have a cart of tapes that would run, you know, one every night and so forth. And as technology progressed, okay, the tapes were slow, okay? So we went to, uh, you know, the, the digital version, okay? And obviously, when you go to a digital version, hence what happened, okay? Um, the, the, the version two of this virus was, was much more aggressive than the version one and went after backups. So, uh, we're going to be looking at, uh, at hardening our, our, our backups, uh, a lot more. And it may mean, maybe bringing back a tape, as far as that goes. Because when you, you take the tape out of the drawer, you can put it in the drawer, it's not going to get locked. So, uh, so, um, there are some options that we're looking at in relation to backup solutions. Um, you know, there's, there's, uh, cloud backup solutions which, uh, augment our, our in-house backups. Uh, so we're looking at those. But anything that you put in the cloud, okay, um, there's a cost to it. It's expensive. So that's, that's, you know, we're going to, you know, put, uh, a forewarning out there that, uh, you know, the backups, and it, but it's, it's, again, the cost of doing business. You know, when you don't have your files, uh, it's, it's, uh, it creates a hardship on everybody, you know, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank all of the departments for, for being, working with us and understanding, uh, and so forth. Uh, our whole team worked so hard, uh, many, many hours. And then with Susan's help on, on, on getting our, uh, a cybersecurity firm that came in and did some, uh, deep diving into the network, that, uh, gave us a lot more insight. Uh, and it's just, again, uh, another set of eyes is, you know, Jim was in the room with us at, I don't know, ten o'clock at night, you know, as we're, you know, trying to, you know, wield through this, uh, mess of weeds. And, you know, as far as, you know, when things happen, you don't know if there's, it's just, i- is there another shoe to drop? And it's, uh, it's stressful. It really is. And, you know, especially when you're, you've got town data. Fortunately, no data was lost as far as left the building and so forth. But it's just recovering all of that and getting everybody's system back up to working to where they expect it to work. So, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Mary Claude? Yes.
I actually had these for you, so if you wanted to pass them there.
Sure.
Um, I wanted to talk first about the electricity. Um, we did have all the new bulbs put in and, um, Tom is right. Those, those heavy-duty fans ran for days at a time. I, I think we've had, was it only two, two? I think it's more than that. And every time we have any rain, we have to run our own fans downstairs to dry it out. So I, seniors will tell you, I'm going around behind them shutting lights off all the time. So I think any increase is probably mostly due to that or rate increases. I'm not quite sure how to approach this. I, I'll, let me be frank. I'm looking for a salary adjustment. Um, the paper I just gave you, um, I think pretty clearly states why. Um, I had started researching this last year on Susan's recommendation. And I very quickly found that researching senior center director salaries is nearly impossible because it's a different job in almost every town. I focused on Windsor Locks because the state had paired us with them as similar towns. They do have a slightly larger, uh, population. But when you work with the formulas that National Council on Aging and everything has, it works out to approximately thirty more seniors, most likely, that they're serving than we are. The salary, the salary there hasn't, has changed, I think, probably as much as this one is budgeted to. I, I didn't speak to her, but she left me a message again yesterday. But bottom line was, she was making last year a hundred and fifty-two dollars a year more than I. However, she has a full-time assistant. It, what, what was a half-time transportation coordinator is now a full-time transportation coordinator. She has, um, she also has, uh, gosh, here. Been writing notes on here and now I can't see what I'm talking about. A part-time receptionist as well, I believe. So the bottom line is, I'm basically doing the job that four people in South, in Windsor Locks are doing. And I, I, I want to, I don't want to take too much of your time because it's late. And I, I, I wanna, I don't wanna take too much of your time because it's late, but I do think that there is not a clear understanding. Certainly in town and unfortunately with a lot of the board as to what goes on at the senior center. I was at a meeting one night when a selectman asked me a question about my patients. We don't have patients at the senior center, we have participants. And, you know, I think that they think, people play bingo all day, every day, and, you know, we, we have parties. I started to make a list today of all the crazy things that we do for people that, that you would never think of. I had to go out to a guy's house one Saturday and fix his cable for him because he faced the prospect of being there all weekend with nothing to do. I've gone and set up people's telephones because they get new phones and can't figure out how to do them. I probably have a senior in my office every week trying to get me to fix their cellphone so they can use it, they get the free ones, they have no clue. And that's just, I mean, it's, it sounds like a silly thing, but these, a lot of these people have no family, no one to turn to, or they won't turn to their family. And it, it makes the job a challenge because I'm constantly being interrupted, constant. I, again, I love my job and I really feel like I make a difference and I just wish that people in town understood exactly how big a difference we do make for people. Another thing that goes, I'm, I'm a Choices volunteer, we call it a volunteer, but it's not really voluntary. With Senior Resources, which does insurance counseling. I, we run the AARP tax, income tax program, which involves scheduling and setting all that up and that was a disaster with the computer problem because. We didn't know who had appointments, who didn't. We've done a lot of intergenerational programs, I just got a, I think, believe it's the fourth grant from the Community Foundation to work with the kids at Chatham Court this summer, which the seniors who participate just love. I have to deal with DSS, with pedestrian issues, similar as filling out applications for people who, who can't do it or won't do it. To add, an elderly couple who were thrown off of Medicare for no reason that anyone could discern. I was told at DSS that that was above their pay grade, that took me over a week to just get, and these were sick people, it, it was just awful. I'm also a qualified food operator, so whatever food serving we do is on my shoulders, I'm responsible for that. I mean, I could go on and, the one other thing is that the senior center in Portland runs the renters rebate program, which is a state program. That is a seven month program, May to December. Most towns, that is done out of the assessor's office. Now, I fully understand why it ended up at the senior center when we didn't have a full-time assessor. And I'm not asking that to be taken away because it allows me to see some people who I would never see in the course of a year. But they'll come to get their renters rebate and then I can kinda check in with them and see what's going on. We've, as, as Tom mentioned, we obtained national accreditation, which at that time, we were in the top two percent of the senior centers in the country. I, I am very proud of that, it was a lot of hard work, not that I did it all myself, but it, it says that what we're doing is important. We've also won all kinds of awards, both locally from the State Association of Senior Center Personnel and from the National Council on Aging for our programming. So I, I, I think that we're, 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 there's a lot going on there. And another thing, back to the electricity, we have more and more people using our building all the time. And when I got there ten years ago, I said, I want this place to the point where we're bursting at the seams, I want this building being used, there was no point in it sitting. Empty night after night, and we've gotten to the point now where we've had one or two occasions where it's like, oh, where are we gonna put these people? But we make it work. And the seniors and I have also raised fifteen thousand dollars towards things that the town really can't afford to do for us. We haven't spent much of it yet, cause Tom makes it tough, but we, we have plans. So, as you can see, I don't wanna get into much detail publicly here, but. The bottom line is, I am paid less per hour than my assistant. And while I do not, Carol deserves every penny she gets, she's the godsend and she's been here a long time and, but it just doesn't feel right. And the differences in her hours that I put on that form refer to the fact that she's listed as a half-time assistant, but she is not. Because during the summer, I lose her two days a week to park and rec, so she isn't even a full part-time assistant. Gail's hours, we're supposed to pick up a little bit of that slack, although we had a clerk before Gail came too, so. And Gail's been great, she's very empathetic, people like her, she's got new eyes on things, but it's, it's. It's simply not fair, I mean, I don't know how else to put it. I did look at other towns, but as I said, it was comparing apples and oranges, for instance. Berlin didn't wanna tell me what her salary was, and she and I are friends, but she didn't wanna tell me. But it, she said it was about sixty-five thousand dollars. She also has a full-time assistant, part-time receptionist and kitchen help. East Hampton had, has a director and two part-time assistants for a total payroll of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Cromwell is not comparable because the senior center is combined with human services. Then I started looking around the country and. A, a great many senior centers have actual program directors in addition to the head director. And most of those start at fifty thousand dollars a year and up, depending on the size of the city. And again, the municipal agent position, which for budget purposes refers only to our transportation, is a statute, statutory role. And that is also a separate salary item in a lot of towns, so for what that's worth. I believe it's ten hours that's required per week, and they used to have a municipal agent who came into the senior center. I don't know when that went away, but it did. So, I, I just, I think that. I think that the, the national accreditation was a step in the right direction in terms of letting people know. The value of the senior center and what we do there, but it's still, this town still needs to recognize. The senior center as a value to the town, and I think that the director's salary is probably a part of that equation. So I guess that's all I have to say, I know it's tough times, but then again, I don't know when it's not tough times. So I just ask you for your consideration, thank you.
Any questions for Mary?
Thank you.
Review, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
And I guess Rick has left, cause really, he'll be on next Tuesday. Be here to answer questions on public works next week. Is there anything else from the selectmen, questions, information you need?
No question.
We'll start with you, Rick.
Maybe for Tom, the. The health insurance number seems large, I mean, I know it's an issue with all businesses and stuff. How does, how does the town get their health insurance for the employees, like how does that work? Does it come through like some state program? Do you guys, do you get to negotiate with different companies each year upon renewal?
Health insurance is, you know, the, the, the plans are negotiated within the contracts. The, like I said, we generally try to bid every year. We had, you know, some marvelous years, probably, maybe nine, ten, eleven. Started trending up a little bit, there was some, obviously, then there were some different law changes that trended up a little bit. There, we, we were with Anthem, we went to Connecticut for a few years and then Cigna won the last bid. So again, there's a rate cap of fifteen percent, we're trending. You know, again, things are out to bid, so I don't really wanna talk about too much of the specifics, but trends are not so great. So that's the, you know, that's the number, you know, there's, you gotta remember, there's, there's some retirees we gotta pay. There's some, some other benefits in there for the police guys that are there in that number, small, not talk too many, but there's some guys in there for that. There are, there's waivers that we pay, there's some like co-pay, the, the. There's, to have some people buy into some plans, they put up some deductibles, so there's different things that, that mirror that, so I just tried to put in. You know, the, the consultant said we should go with the rate, with the, the rate cap. And I tried to put in as much as I could on the, on where I thought the number was to where it could go. And, you know, it is what it is, if we, you know, if we can somehow, if it, if it skids down, we'll try it, but my thought right now is you're. Even if you go out to bid, I don't think, we are bidding, but I don't think you're gonna get materially below the rate cap to warrant a move.
Are you bound by your contracts for set copays and deductibles and things like that, or, or is that all part of the?
Yeah, they're, they're all, they're all negotiated, anything would have to be labor union negotiated and that's a, you know. Health plans are, you know, it's a, it's a major reason why people work in a town and, 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 and it's a major reason why people do that. We, we try to keep a fair plan to all our employees, we respect their well-being, their families' well-beings. And it's, it's just, you know, like you say, a lot of people say there's a cost of doing business, that's a cost of doing a business, you know what I mean, and, you know, it's out there. You know, we, we always try to do our best to mitigate it, but when, you know. The, the markets are how they are, the trends, at least ten or eleven percent, just in trend alone, and then if claims are rough, they go up.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, well done, Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, we'll adjourn, motion, Jim?
I'm on.
Second by Lou.
Second.
On the favor, aye.
Aye.
Now, tomorrow, depending on weather, I'll let everybody know. Tomorrow is not a workshop, tomorrow is regularly scheduled meeting, but with the prediction of multiple inches of snow.
There's a budget workshop if needed, so it's not needed.
We're not, we're not doing a budget workshop.